Why isn't it trying to get rid of the chair?
Oh, why?
These are all mine.
No, you can raise.
No, I don't care. It's not the right chair.
There we go.
I wasn't.
I'm going to call this meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Yeah.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Here.
Mayor Sander.
Here. Could you read the Metro Cable TV television announcement, please?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, March 19th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, March 21st at 6:00 p.m. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Okay, we are going to continue with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask Chief Pittman to lead us in the pledge. That will be followed by an invocation led by Cheryl Longsworth. So after the pledge, if you'd remain standing, Cheryl will lead us in the invocation.
Ready, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, please bless these proceedings and those in this room and in our community. Bless our leaders with peace and knowledge and wisdom to guide our city through these trying times and to make wise decisions on behalf of all of our, all the residents. Please bestow upon all of us your peace and grace as we get through these difficult times. Amen.
Thank you for that, Cheryl. That was very well put. We are sort of here in extraordinary times, but business goes on, and we are looking at a relatively short agenda item tonight, or rather, to a short agenda tonight, with a few modifications over normal practice. You've already realized you're sitting far apart from each other in our audience. There may be other things we want to do to try to maintain as much safety as we can. Okay, presentations. Item number five, I think Albert Stricker, you are up first, or you're designee.
Good evening, Mayor Sander. Good evening, council members. Before I jump into the presentation tonight, I'd just like to take a moment to thank council for the support on this project here, Ollie Autonomous Shuttle. I'd like to also thank our partners, SACOG, for the funding support, Basin Street Properties for the use of their facilities, and Local Motors for selecting the city Rancho Cordova for a pilot project. In addition, I'd also like to thank our communications teams for their effort with the outreach. And lastly, Rupa Somavara Varapu for her guidance on this project. All right. Okay. Tonight, I'm going to talk about some of the pilot project goals associated with our autonomous vehicle that we piloted. I'm going to talk about what we did, some of the challenges we faced, what we learned, and then I'll conclude with some next steps. So some of our pilot project goals that we identified were, a lot of it was mainly related to data collection. We wanted to get the rider sentiment. We wanted to determine whether or not Ollie was able to interact with people and vehicles. We wanted to determine what those operational deficiencies were and whether or not it was able to autonomously navigate a predefined route. So what we did, we had Ollie for a pilot project for four months on a predefined one-mile route. It operated Monday through Friday from eight to five, and we participated in public outreach efforts, which included a media event that some of the council members participated in. We advertised on social media and the city's website. We participated in a green fair that was put on by California Department of Technology. We provided a static display at the Capitol Air Show, and we also presented at SACOG Regional Futures Forum Event along with the regional IT conference. So some of the challenges that we experienced throughout this pilot project were both data speeds and data storage went hand in hand. We quickly realized that we had some issues with the data speeds at the facility that we were operating at, and we upgraded the data speeds. But we found out that it still wasn't enough, and I'm sure some of you guys have realized that 5G will probably take care of some of this stuff. Data storage was also an issue with transferring data back to headquarters in the evening. The data speeds wasn't fast enough to be able to clear out the data storage to operate the next day. We had some challenges with communication when there were issues with Ollie, getting that information back to the city.
A bandwidth issue?
A bandwidth issue, right. Yeah. It just wasn't fast enough for them to transfer the data.
I wonder how much data they were trying to?
It was a lot, a lot of data every day.
Huh.
We had issues with communication when there were issues with Ollie and not operating. Getting that information back out to the public was a challenge. We found that software updates was an issue, just like your computers, it requires updates, just as it does on Ollie. And with each update, they had to refine and tune their sensors in order to be able to operate as it's designed. We had issues with inclement weather. We found that heavy rain and fog, the sensors were so sensitive that it was detecting, you know, every droplet and stopping instantaneously. So there's some issues there. And then shuttle operating speed, might not have been an issue at this location, but on a real-world basis, you know, operating at 25 miles an hour is not going to work on a road that's 40 miles an hour. All right, continuing on. So what did we learn? We learned that Ollie was able to demonstrate that it was operational 88% of the time with 12% downtime, and that equates to about 633 actual hours of operation with 87 hours of downtime. We shuttled 300 riders around the facility with it traveling approximately 1,500, over 1,500 miles, and we had 93 safety steward interventions. And these included shuttle-stuck events, excessive braking, non-yielding vehicles and pedestrians, safety interventions such as aggressive movements by other vehicles, vehicles falling too closely, and hardware-software failures.
For one issue. About one issue every 100, 150 miles?
Right.
No, every 15 miles.
Right.
Every 15 miles.
Fifteen?
All right. All right, bear with me as I get through some of these surveys results that we highlighted here. So with the surveys that we conducted, we found that 74% of the riders indicated that they would promote Ollie to others after test ride. 65% rode Ollie, just out of curiosity, and the other 35% was for other reasons. We asked if Ollie was available in their daily life, 94% responded that they would use it as a mobility option. We asked riders if they felt safe or very safe riding Ollie. 89% responded that they did. 73% felt that it was very valuable for them operating at the location that we operated at. 51% didn't have any concerns with Ollie operating or interacting with bikes and pedestrians and other traffic within the facility. When we asked whether or not riders would trust a driverless vehicle, 56% responded that they did. However, when we asked if they felt less comfortable riding a driverless vehicles with manual controls, 48% felt that they, they had some concerns. In addition, 48% also still remained skeptical due to failure with the technology. When asked if drivers were more confident with their own driving skills compared to a driverless vehicle, 60%, 62% still felt that, you know, they were a lot more comfortable and confident with their own driving. And then when we asked whether or not Ollie changed their, their idea of it being, being safer, they felt that, 41% felt that their concerns were for the better. And then when we asked what, how they felt about reducing congestion and improving mobility, 40% felt that they, they felt that it would do those things. All right, so when we asked the top four reasons why riders may not want to be, may not be in favor of a driverless vehicle, those answers were, it may prevent them from driving, they may lose the joy of driving and being in control, possible equipment or system failures, failures, and cybersecurity issues still exists. And then when we asked what their three top reasons were for riders who want to use a driverless vehicle, impairment by alcohol, fatigue, and medication was the top one. Traffic congestion reduction was another top one, and fuel and air pollution reduction was also a top one. The top four things riders thought would improve Ollie, continued testing for operational improvements and rideability was a top one. Testing it in more locations, including residential employment areas, implementing it as a first mile, last mile option, and just simple music onboard. So not only did we learn something from all this, Local Motors learned some stuff from this as well and also improved. They quickly learned that rain and fog was a, was an issue, and they're working right now to address those issues with changing out the sensors and building better quality sensors for it. Firmware upgrade for improved performance, you know, and every day they're operating, they're learning new things, so they're continuously improving the firmware associated with it. They had braking sensitivity adjustments and object detection adjustments also that they learned were an issue with some of the objects. And strategic operation for improved duration. They found that if they cycled their shuttle a certain way, they're able to gain more energy out of it as opposed to reducing down that, that, that energy level, and things such as, you know, turning off the system, all the HVAC system completely when they're at a stop at a pickup location.
Explain that last sentence.
So they found that if they turned off the HVAC system with nobody in it at each stop, they're able to preserve more energy as opposed to keeping it running, waiting for riders to come onboard. All right, so in conclusion, with rider sentiment, we felt that riders that did get a chance to test out Ollie were very supportive, and they felt that Ollie was safe. They felt that Ollie interacted with people and other vehicles safely. We understood that there were operational deficiencies and that more testing and research was needed. But however, with what they've developed so far, they were able to successfully navigate the predefined route for a period of four months. So some of the next steps that the city is looking to take is, you know, continue to collaborate with SACOG, track regulations for public roadway use, vendor research for existing public roadway use waivers, there are some that do exist, identify operating ability and second phase goals, and first mile, last mile test for connection from the transit station into the deployment center. All right. And again, I'd like to thank the council for their support on this project, and I'm going to take any questions you have.
All right. Any questions, council?
I'm kind of curious about the, one of your points there was about possibly going to residential areas or like that. Is that something in the future after you do some more testing?
It's, it's possible. We've looked at several different use cases, use cases for seniors, use cases for disadvantaged communities, connection providing into the employment center. So we have those, those use cases available. It's just a matter of whether or not the technology is going to be available for public roadway use for us to start testing those options.
So you're waiting for the software to be changed and for the other things like that?
Technology is a big one, and also regulations is a big one for us.
Okay, thanks.
I think at this point, Councilmember McGarvey, these vehicles, autonomous vehicles are not allowed on public roads in California.
Yeah, only in Phoenix or something.
Unless they have a driver.
Right.
Right.
Perfect.
Doesn't make them autonomous anymore.
So I have, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Of the people who wrote it, did you collect any percentage of who actually worked in those buildings and who just went out of curiosity?
That's the part that we didn't collect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, because we all went out of curiosity, but, you know.
Right.
Don't I remember that Ollie is made on a 3D printer?
30% of the, the Ollie that we tested was built on 3D printing. I believe the newer one is now 80% 3D printed.
Okay, and Ollie is electric?
All-electric, correct.
So obviously, the, the powertrain is the most expensive part of the thing.
Right.
Interesting to figure out how Ollie compares with just a regular electric vehicle. Interesting to figure out how OLLI compares with just a regular electric vehicle in terms of, you know, cost to construct and run versus cost to construct and run. So that would be interesting to know also.
Other questions?
Keep doing projects like this.
I thought it was fun.
You just stole my comment. Yeah, we want to keep, we want to keep this innovation going, you know, it's something we can do. I think we're in a special place here in California. We're in a special place with regard to Sacramento and the technologies here. There are things happening in this whole space around automation and vehicles in our community and in our region. And I just want to be sure we're as open to that as possible and as prepared for that as possible.
Especially since, you know, we really have kind of a guinea pig environment right here because we have, we have all these jobs in a specific cluster. There's no reason people shouldn't be able to, to take the, to take OLLI, some version of OLLI from Delta Dental to Salatai or something like that, you know?
To lunch or to RT or to wherever you're going.
Yeah, sure.
Should we make it so we can take this guy over the freeway?
Oh, that comes in the new, the new roadway thingy.
Our new fancy bridge we're planning, yeah.
Yes, free OLLI trips.
That would be awesome. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have item 5.2, and Cheryl Longsworth, if you would, join me at the podium at an appropriate distance. All right.
Don't touch the mics.
Do we have what's his name?
Do you have to toss that to her? Here's your proclamation. All right. Is it on the bottom? It's on? Are we good? Are we on? There we go. Okay, well Cheryl, we are here for an important reason at an unfortunate time, but an important reason nonetheless. So we're happy to recognize your organization's good work through this proclamation. So proclamation reads, "The City of Rancho Cudovas recognizes the SORO-Optimus International of Rancho Cudovas and Gold River in honor of Women's History Month. Whereas the United States has observed Women's History Month annually throughout the Munch of March since 1987, and whereas SORO-Optimus was formed in 1921 in Oakland, California, at a time when women were not permitted to join service organizations, and whereas SORO-Optimus is a global volunteer organization that provides women and girls with access to education and training to achieve economic empowerment, today there are approximately 160,000 members and supporters in 21 countries. And whereas SORO-Optimus International, or SI, of Rancho Cudovas and Gold River has served the City of Rancho Cudovas and the surrounding communities for over 10 years." It's been that long? I remember when you founded it.
Yeah.
Wow. "And whereas SI of Rancho Cudovas and Gold River has helped to give support, has helped to give hope, support, and empowerment to 1,415 Folsom-Cudovas Unified School District students and 1,300 domestic violence survivors by making and providing comfort kits. And whereas SI of Rancho Cudovas and Gold River has presented college scholarships to 15 single moms to help them achieve their dream of higher education and to give them the ability to raise their quality of life for themselves and their children. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Rancho Cudovas does hereby recognize SORO-Optimus International of Rancho Cudovas and Gold River for their contribution to the health and well-being of our community and witness whereof. I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Rancho Cudovas be affixed this, and this was 24th of February." There you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations for all your good work. And if you'd like to make a comment at the mics, they are on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I prepared a brief video, kind of summarizing, how do you summarize 10 years' worth of service to this community in two minutes? Well, I'll just put a fun little video together, just showing some snippets of the different projects that we've done, so here you go. I know those little blue titles kind of flash by kind of quickly, but we're very proud of our accomplishments, and we have, I have two of my club members here, Janice and Julie. Can I stand up? They, Julie actually co-founded the club with me 10 years ago, and Janice is one of our relatively new members. She's been with us about all over a year, right? Almost two years. So and she's, and she's my vice president. So we're just, we're just very thrilled about what we've managed to achieve. Unfortunately, that little bit about the Bunko toward the end, we had a Bunko fundraiser scheduled at the end of the month, we had to postpone it. But we will, we will be doing it as soon as this whole situation gets settled, so we can have some fun again.
Yes.
But any questions?
Questions, Michelle? Well, thank you so much for everything your organization does. It's so exciting to see everything you've accomplished over 10 years. I'm kind of flabbergasted, it's been that long.
Well, you gave us, we got our award for the Court of the Council for distinguishing service to youth.
Yeah.
And it was in our 10th year, so.
Yeah, it's, it's an amazing thing, but congratulations on all your good work.
Thank you.
And, you know, the city is here to facilitate and foster organizations like yours, so think about that in terms of partnerships or barriers you may face. The Court of the Community Council is also here for that purpose, so I know you already take advantage of that, of that partnership.
And we are also Rancho Cudovas Chamber members, so we also partner quite a bit with Diane and her group.
Very good. Well, thank you for your good work.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we are moving on to public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council in any manner not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. Those speaker cards are available in the back. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium at the point on the agenda when that item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state their name and community residence. Under provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action after the posting of the, or the need became obvious to take action after the posting of the agenda. Do you have any cards turned in?
We do. Darrell Langwell, if you'll come forward.
Darrell, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Darrell Langwell, the Vineyards neighborhood. I enjoy reading the agenda before I come to the meeting, so I have a little bit of an idea of what's going on. Since the new software has been used, the print is really small on my computer, and I haven't found any way to make it any larger. So if something could be done to help those of us with less than optimal vision, it would be appreciated by me and probably several other people. Thank you very much.
Hey Darrell, when you pull it up, hit Ctrl++ on your screen.
Hit Ctrl which?
Plus. That'll make the, hit Ctrl+, it'll make the text get bigger.
Thank you.
On Windows.
Nobody uses Macs.
Anybody else have like computer operating questions?
Anyone else with computer problems, please bring them forward. I'm going to go ahead and get this in.
Computer viruses?
No. We'll talk about the other virus. Norton has 100% convenience, is 100% without it. If you use Norton antivirus, you're guaranteed to not have coronavirus.
Excellent. I got an email to that effect from Symantec, I thought, great. Any other cards?
No.
Anybody else wanting to comment? Saying none, we're going to move on to council reports, and Mr. McGarvey, you're up first.
Well, I wanted to thank Cyrus to begin this meeting we had today. It's just a kind of a get-together of people from the student, Folsom-Cudovas Unified School District, and Robert Slanger from the Folsom-Cudovas Community Partnership and Cudovas and Park District, and the, just a lot of people are there to see what we can do to make things a little bit easier and better for some of the kids that need some help during this time off when they've got a month of no school, and it makes it very hard. So we're going to have another meeting, and maybe we can have some information that'll be passed on to others. But we had about 40 people involved in this today, so that was pretty good for the quick information we passed out saying what's going to be done, so I was very happy with that. The next Sacramento-Yolo Mosquito Vet Control District Board meeting will be tomorrow, and I'll pass on any new information we have on that. I haven't gotten anything on emails yet from anybody. And I got one more thing. The, printed this out online, this is from the President's Coronavirus Guidelines for America. Says 15 days to slow the spread. So if you're sick, stay home. If your children are sick, keep them home. If anyone in your household has tested positive, keep the whole household home. If you are an older person, stay home. If you're a person with a serious underlying health condition, stay home. Sound like a pretty simple way of taking care of everything, just stay home. I'm not sure if you're going to be able to go to the stores or not, but that's what the President's guidelines says anyway, part of it was, is everybody stay home. So I guess all you guys here shouldn't be here, I'm not sure. So I'm done.
Well, obviously, Bob, you and I have the distinction of not having stayed home. So we had a very productive lunch with Henry Lee, who is the General Manager of Regional Transit. And RT is actually finally working on bringing some additional bus service back to Rancho Cudovas. They have expanded the service area of the Smart Ride, and we want to thank one of our Lincoln Village residents for having brought this to everyone's attention. And they've expanded the Smart Ride service area so that it will cover Lincoln Village, and that's a really important service for them. There is also a commute bus that is going to connect with the Sunrise Station, and unfortunately, that one's been delayed because of all the, all of the issues that they've got going on right now, making sure that they are keeping the, keeping the system as clean as possible. And so we got a note yesterday that it'll, it's going to be delayed. This bus they're calling 128 will be delayed, but it will be there eventually. At the regional transit meeting on Monday night, I am happy to report that public comment will continue to be at three minutes as opposed to the proposal that somebody had suggested that public comment would be limited to only two minutes. And we took a vote, and the vast majority of everybody agreed that the regionally common three-minute public comment period was important for everyone. So I have to say that was an issue avoided. And I don't know about anybody else, but I got my letter from the census, and I opened it, and I went to the website, and it was really simple, and there were only like three or four questions. They simply want to know some information about the household, they want to know some information about the people who live in the household, and it was extremely simple, and it probably took me three minutes to fill out. So again, we want to encourage everyone to answer the census. Everybody in this room will tell you that the vast majority of funds that we get from different sources, like the state government or the federal government, is done on a per capita basis, which means they have to count everyone in order for us to get our fair share of our own taxpayer dollars back from the governments that we send them to at tax time. And again, we all thoroughly encourage everyone to answer the survey, answer the census. It's very easy to do, you have a variety of three different ways to do it in, and I encourage everyone to sign up. Thank you.
And if you want to save yourself some time with the census, if you fill that out first, no one, they're not going to send the follow-up one that's longer, somebody won't knock on your door and do the full form. So the longer you wait, the more work you're going to have to do.
Yeah, do it now, absolutely.
Trust me, I learned that 20 years ago.
He's 100% correct.
That if I had answered the three questions, I wouldn't have answered the 200-question questionnaire. Which I did once. And it's annoying. But I felt bad for the kid that came to my door. Haven't had a lot of public meetings on my end. As one of the two parents here that are in Elk Grove Unified, we got to be the early ones to have school closures. So I would just say to everyone out there, be safe, listen to what Councilmember McGarvey just mentioned. These are trying times, like we've said, but we'll get through it as a country, as a community, as a city. I guess the one thing I would just point out to all the small business owners that are in the city and in this region, one thing that the President did announce earlier last week was $50 billion of additional funding from the SBA. Don't go to your local bank for that, you need to call the SBA and the regional offices to apply for it. I believe it's up to, I can't remember what the loan limits are, but that extra liquidity is coming directly from the federal government. So you may be familiar with the SBA guaranteed product that you may have gotten from your local bank, that is not what this funding is for. So if you're, if, you know, talking to our chamber or anybody else, and you need short-term financing for your business to get through these times, you need to contact the SBA directly. I've had a lot of questions about that in the last week. So also, one of the kid, the other members that has this kid, my kid's now not been in school for about two months, and so by, because he got off right before it started, and then it, he had a day of school, and then he got off again for another, now it looks like three to four weeks. So it'll actually be two and a half, so, but they're telling me his summer is now gone, and so he'll be doing school, up to school again, which I thought was interesting. Went to a policymaker in Yosemite, very interesting individuals, seeing what is out there. I think the most aggressive one is San Diego, but I think everything's upended, so it doesn't matter what anyone does due to the coronavirus. I think it's affecting the economy so much that they're basically, they're going to make a, a center, and all they're going to have is housing, jobs, and absolutely no parking. So you would drive into the center, and you would take your Ubers and stuff like that in, but there is no, there's no parking, there's no parking structures, there's no place for your cars. The whole thing will be something around 100,000 people with no cars in one spot. They're taking over a big military base, wiping it out, and building up structures. And so they said that's their first try at trying to get rid of the need of cars. Be interesting to see what they have to do with that. Met with the Folsom-Cudovas School District to talk about the things that are going on with the junior lancers and other issues that we're having throughout the school. They seemed very receptive. STA, banged my head against that a lot, a lot, because I can't seem to get them to adjust it. I don't even know if we're going to go through with it anymore. We did have a tax bill, but right now it seems like literally the worst time to raise taxes on individuals and even for roads. So I don't know what we're going to do about that. And then the baseball program. So, I don't know what we're going to do about that. And then, the baseball program, was excited about that because everyone's ready. And so, when baseball does start back up, we do have higher numbers than last year. So, that's always good to see engagement and hoping for Jacob to get his first win. Thank you.
All right. I'll have a brief report. I attended the National League of Cities Meeting last week in DC, probably the last meeting of its kind for a couple of months. I am Chair of the Transportation Committee, working on the reauthorization bill that's coming through Congress this year on transportation funding. So, that's a role that I played. I think this is the third time, if I've, if I'm counting right, with the league, because that's a periodic bill that Congress needs to pass every, every five years. And I'm Vice Chair of the Advisory Board, which is sort of the, the senior leadership of the organization. And the interesting thing, of course, that happened there is all the discussion at that meeting turned into something coronavirus-related. And I'm the one elected official virologist in the nation that I'm aware of. And so, as soon as that became known to the room and, and, you know, I offered to answer questions, every hand of every person in the room went up with tons of questions. But that did, I think, that discussion that we had as a group that really framed things for a lot of people when information is at a premium or there's so much information that you don't know what to, what to pay attention to or worry about. And so, I'm encouraging those sorts of discussions elsewhere. I've had a couple by, by phone call, by conference call, sort of with some, with some folks. But the annual meeting was generally good. I found a few things of particular interest. One of them is the Kaufman Foundation in Kansas City. They are an economic development organization, foundation, and they're really focused on economic development in Kansas City. But they are offering a nationwide program where they allow mayors, council members to come in. You have to apply and if you're accepted, you'll come in with your economic development idea. And in my case, it'd probably be Technology Council, that idea we've kicked around for a while. How do we best support our tech sector here in Rancho Cordova? You go there and they put you through something like a boot camp to train you up with that idea. A whole bunch of people look at it. It's like a, like a think tank approach. What, what should we do? How do you do this? What's the best way to do it? What are the parts you need? What are the outcomes you're looking for? All that sort of stuff. And then, send you off with it. And you have to report back on, obviously, how well it was executed. But their goal is to raise the quality of economic development efforts that are undertaken by cities, because often they're well-intentioned, not well-thought-out, not necessarily well-executed. But we keep trying. And so, they're trying to, to set us up to sort of a higher level of function. That may be something we can, we can take advantage of. See, last week, I was the speaker at the Planning Commissions Meeting for the League of California Cities. You know, they have different divisions, have meetings. This is a training session for planning commissioners. And they asked me to serve on a panel that would comment on the relationship between city councils and planning commissions. And I was asked to, to serve on the panel. Of course, the irony being that we don't have planning commission, that we let ours go about a decade ago, I guess, maybe a little over a decade ago. And so, there's a lot of laughs about that particular incongruity in me being on, on this panel. But I sort of said, you know, you guys got to do a good job or, you know, we'll just, you're out, right? This is not really our story here, but it was, it was a very fun and, and good discussion. We had a meeting today with, which Bob referenced, with some Rancho Cordova churches and other nonprofits. The park district was there. The school district sort of called this meeting. And the idea is what could we do to support our students? And Cyrus, you might want to comment on that later. But generally, the school district has a plan for feeding kids. I'm not sure they told us in great specificity what it is, other than it starts tomorrow. And they're going to do it at, did they say every site or certain sites and make meals available?
It's, it's.
Basically to go.
It's seven sites through the district. It just came out on the, on, it just came out about 5:30.
They did send out the flyer, right?
Okay.
And phone calls just went out too.
It's seven sites. One is up in Folsom at Theodore Judah, but there are elementary schools here in Rancho and Mills Junior High.
Good. So, we will make that information available through our city's website to be sure people get out. They were asking perhaps for some volunteer assistance and making those sites work. I think that's a wait and, wait and see. So, we talked a little bit in that group about how to, how to facilitate that volunteer support. There was a lot of comments about other things in the room. And it's really interesting. A lot of people want to do something to help. We just got to be sure we're doing smart things to help. Things that are actually getting to problems and not, you know, problems looking for, I'm sorry, solutions looking for problems. So, anyway, I think, I like that organization of that group. Hopefully, we can have more productive and, and getting to an endpoint meetings in the future. And finally, today, I've been on a lot of conference calls, but there was one in particular today that was supposed to be mayors and board chairs from Sacramento County. Then they invited everyone from surrounding counties to also be on this phone call. Attendance on that call was low. I'd guess 15 or 20% of who should have been on it. But it strikes me that there is no regional conversation happening among mayors and supervisors. And so, I've asked SECOG to question, you know, undertake perhaps convening something like that.
That's a good idea. There have been twice in the past.
Yep.
We had a mayor and board chairs forum, if you remember. And that one, when the lady who was the secretary retired, then it retired with her.
It did.
And then they tried to bring that back.
Did that end after I was mayor?
Yeah.
The lunches?
Yeah.
Oh, did you kill it?
Yeah.
It restarted when I was mayor.
And it did.
We did three or four of them. We hosted one of them.
Right. And they brought that, it was started up in Folsom, up in Roseville and that went around for like, like you said, like two or three times and then that just died.
So, this is the time when we need that level of coordination.
This was mayors and vice mayors, I want to say. And then it kind of expanded to some city managers and, but it was really Christopher.
Cabalda.
Yeah, Darryl and Susan Rowan.
Yeah.
Were kind of the leaders of it. But it was the, it was, it was Mayor Steinberg's first year as mayor.
So, there is an organization that runs in parallel with SECOG. Actually, I guess it's probably in association with SECOG where the city managers and county managers get together on a regular basis. And that is sort of the, the staff side of it. We're the elected side of it. And I'm going to keep working on that front. I think we need to have that level of, of conversation in the next, you know, hours, days. Cyrus, city managers report?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the, the main topic that, that I wanted to talk about is related to the work and activities that we've had related to coronavirus. It has been very busy to two weeks and I would save my comments for when we get to the item on 12.1 on the agenda. We are going to have an extensive discussion about that topic and the specific actions or measures that we're considering.
Okay. We are then going to go on with consent calendar items. Item number nine. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. So, we are talking about items 9.1 through 9.7. Are there any items the council wishes to pull?
Seeing none, I'll move approval of the consent calendar items 9.1 through 9.7.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
I'm going to call the roll, but if you're trying to do your electronic voting, it may not work at this time. So, we're working on that. Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good. That was our consent calendar. We are moving on to consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. In this case, we simply have item 10.1. I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there any speaker cards for this item?
No.
Going to close the public hearing. Are there any, any other discussion by council or is there a motion?
I will move approval of the adoption of the resolution to submit the 2019 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report to HUD.
Motion made by Budge, seconded by McGarvey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Okay, that takes us on to item number 11, public hearing items. My vote just popped up here. City Clerk, could you read the subject for our public hearing item?
Sure.
11.1.
GLP Stores Major Design Review Project Number DD 9903 Located on the Southwest Corner of Zinfandel Drive and North Mather Boulevard.
Okay, staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Sander, members of the council. Darcey Galar with the Planning Department. If you recall, this item was continued a few meetings ago for some issues to work through. Staff has worked through those issues and that information has been provided in your staff report. Due to the circumstances facing us today, we are happy to answer any questions you may have. We're looking to potentially forego the presentation unless the council would like to see that tonight.
Linda, you had a series of questions last time.
I did. And I had an opportunity to, to chat with the applicant about that. And the, the designs that you see tonight are a product of the applicant's willingness to dress up the project and give it more of a, a very, a much better architectural presence along Zinfandel.
And your intent was to make it look a little less industrial, make it a little more friendly to the, to the community?
It does. And it will, it will flow down the hill nicely. It has a, it's got an architectural feature that will be, that will face the intersection. And that feature is replicated in a variety of ways around the building. The color, the color scheme has been changed so that it's a much more updated, much more vivid-looking building. And it will be, it will do quite nicely in that location.
Okay, council, you've had a chance to view the changes. Any other questions or comments about it?
I will move approval of the major design review.
I do have a.
Oh, sorry. Speaker cards?
So, the city clerk's office today received a written comment. All of you have been provided that at the dais. A copy of that has also been provided to the public as well as to the staff on this project.
Okay, so I will.
Public hearing is open. Any cards? Just that one letter. Public hearing is closed.
I will move approval of the GLP Stores Major Design Review Project DD 9903 and recommend we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Second then. Made by Budge, seconded by my colleague on the left. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
That takes us to item 11.2. If you would read the item, please.
Presentation of the 2020-2024 Community Development Block Grant Draft Consolidated Plan and Draft 2020 Annual Action Plan.
Good evening, Mayor Sander and members of the council. Again, Darcey Galar with the Planning Department. Similar to the previous item and approach, all the information is in the staff report. This item actually will come back for a formal public hearing on the first meeting in April. This is part of the process to take public comment on the plan that's before you. We do have a presentation that we can quickly run through tonight if you wish, or we can answer any questions you may have.
Anyone like to hear the full presentation? Are we satisfied with the staff report?
I read the staff report. I'm good.
All right. I think we can pass on the full presentation and look forward to the public hearing. Everything looks to be on track.
If there's any public comment, we should take that tonight. Otherwise, we'll come back and.
Sure. All right. So, I'm opening the public hearing on this item. No comments from council. Any cards sent in for the public?
I don't have any.
All right. Seeing none, closing that. We have this listed as a public hearing. Do we need to, but it's a presentation. Do we need to vote on this? So, it should have been listed just as a regular calendar item, probably.
There's currently a public hearing notice that is published for a duration of time. So, probably just continuing it to the April 6th meeting.
Okay.
So, you, right. So, you don't want us to adopt the plan tonight. You want us to just distribute it?
Correct. It was just for informational purposes tonight.
Got it.
All right. Should have been 12.1 instead of 11.2, but that's fine. Okay. Do we need to take any action or is all of its placement on the agenda?
No.
No? All right. Good enough. We're then going to move on to regular calendar items. And item number one is, I'm sorry, 12.1 is a presentation update on the COVID-19 slash coronavirus. Cyrus, I think I'll hand this to you.
I will hand it over to our Communications Director, Maria Nisted, but I just wanted to say a few opening remarks. As you all know, this is obviously the, the very pressing news that we are hearing and the actions that are being taken at the federal, state, and local level. We have been having many, many conversations and discussions amongst ourselves, amongst our colleagues, monitoring and tracking what happens at the state level or what has happened at the federal level. Very fluid the situation, very, it's definitely a moving target. So, what our, what our goal was tonight was to provide the council with a very high-level update of some of the information that we have shared with the community and also some of the information that we have received from different levels of government and, and talk about some specific measures that we plan on implementing at the local level to respond to this issue that's facing us. Very definitely something that's, we have not had a precedent for this kind of event, for this kind of issue that we're facing as, as a nation. And definitely, these are not usual times and extraordinary measures would have to be considered in coming weeks and months. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Maria Nisted.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Maria Nisted with the Communications and Public Affairs Department. This evening, we wanted to provide you with a brief update on our city response to COVID-19, otherwise known as coronavirus. There are five high-level issues that we'll go ahead and cover, provide you with a little bit of background of who we're working with, some operational decisions that we've made, the education that we are providing to our community and to our partners, and the community support that we have been asked to provide. It's been covered a little bit already, and some of the policy issues that are facing us. So, quickly, we know that you, we have been keeping you in the loop on who we are working with. And so, we just wanted to reiterate that the staff here at, at the city manager level, deputy city manager, leadership team, and also at the staff level, we are all working with our local cities, specifically with our county Department of Public Health, with state OES, with our federal representatives to ensure that we have the very latest, up-to-date information that will inform decisions that the city needs to make that are in the best interests of our residents and our businesses. So, specifically, we have been on a number of calls ranging from White House briefings all the way down to local-level PIO-type briefings. The, last week, the Emergency Operations Center was virtually, was a virtual emergency operations center. They have actually activated a Level 2 now at the county and state levels. We have been sharing information and providing that to our residents and businesses. We recognize that we don't have a health department here at the city, so we look to the county for that direction. And we have been providing the information that they have been offering. We've been making sure that we're passing that along to everyone. As a result, we've made some operational decisions to ensure that we're in alignment at the federal, state, and local levels. And I think Cyrus was going to outline what those were.
Yes, council. I think, one of the, some of the measures that we have considered in implementing, we are keeping the health and safety of our community and our staff. It remains our highest priority. And we would like to minimize the contact and minimize the interaction that our staff has with our customers. So, some of the processes, some of the business practices that we have at the city hall, mainly the permit counter and the work that we do at the permit counter, we are removing the chairs so, so applicants could drop their applications off. We can take those in and review the applications and follow up with a phone call with our customers as opposed to having a face-to-face meeting. So, those are some relatively small adjustments that we're making to keep our staff and the members of the public safe. We're also asking, like what Councilmember McGarvey mentioned, that if you, if any of our employees is at risk or if they have sick family members, we're asking them, we're urging them to stay home. We are also developing a list of some of our essential services that if it comes to a level where we are mandated by the state or the federal government that we have to basically go into a sheltering. that we have to basically go into a sheltering place or lockdown, very much like some other communities have done throughout the nation, that we're prepared to act upon it. We also are looking at, let me just get my list out here. We're also asking that all of our city-sponsored events be canceled for the remainder of this month and probably until middle of April. We want to basically sync all of our events consistent with the school district closure through April 14th and then reassess at some point and, and decide if this is time to return to normal business or normal practices or continue it. But, so some of, anything that, once again, in compliance with the mandates that we have received for keeping today, the number was revised to 10 people. It used to be gatherings of 50, 50-plus. We're trying to minimize and remove basically any calendars on our meetings from our calendar that requires more than 10 people. We're also, we'll be implementing a no-travel policy at this point until further notice. So we'll be asking our staff to, for, until probably the middle of April, to avoid taking, getting on planes and traveling to, for, for businesses, for, for conferences. So those are some of the, some of the examples of some of the operational changes that we have made. And we wanted to let the council know that this, we have put this in effect and we're in the process of putting some additional measures, considering additional measures. We also have talked about, to be able to have access to any potential funding from federal and state government, we, we plan on activating our Emergency Operations Center, EOC. We call that a Level 3, that's the lowest level, where we, I mean, basically need to have presence 24 hours, seven days a week. And doesn't mean that we will be physically here, but we will be available to assist our residents and our business community with any issues that may come up. Later this, in the coming, either this week or next week, we will, as we monitor the situation, as the situation develops even more, we will be considering to declare a local state of emergency. And that is, just to put everybody's mind at ease, what that simply means is making a mechanism available for us to be able to recoup and recover any costs that we have from the federal government. That's a necessary step that we have to do to be able to have access to those funds from the federal government. Yes, sir.
Question, is there some funds also from the state for the cities? Or is that just from the federal?
We don't know yet. I think it's, at this point, we know that there, there are a couple of bills that are being contemplated at the state level. We know that the federal government has made $50 billion available for emergency response. And declaring a state of, local state of emergency and also activating our EOC makes us eligible, if needed and when needed, to apply for those funds.
Thank you.
So any questions on some of the measures that we have talked about or identified so far?
Okay, so let's talk a little bit about how we're making sense of all of the information that our residents and businesses are seeing in the news. There are really three ways in which we are doing this. We're communicating externally, internally, and also monitoring our news media as well as social media. This is often called social media listening. The reason we do this is to ensure that there is no disinformation that's being disseminated to people, and if there is, then we have an opportunity to correct it before it becomes an issue. So on the external side of things, and, and these are, this is all information that you have received, but just to give you a sense of the bigger picture of the way that we're approaching it, is we are providing to our residents and businesses very specific information about how we are responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. We have created a special webpage with a friendly URL for everyone who needs to visit it, and it provides city-specific information, and that is cityofranchacordova.org/coronavirus. There is a button at the very, on our homepage. It's very prominent and large, and all you have to do is click on that, and that will take you straight to the page. You can also find it via the friendly URL. We'll be aggregating all of our city-specific information there, and that includes any letters that we send out to our residents as well as informational links. We are making sure that any type of scientific, medical, or any type of background information that we are pointing people to the county site and to the CDC for that. We don't want to be seen as a, a place where they can find that information because it's changing so very quickly. So we're pointing them to those sites, but we are providing them with very specific city information on our site. And I will tell you, just since we activated that on Friday, we've received nearly, I think it's over 1,600-page visits just in a few days. So we're, we're actually updating that frequently. Our mayor just was part of a video shoot, so he'll be bringing to life some of the information that we're providing to our residents in letters. And along those lines, we did send a letter to our entire community, our residents and our businesses, on Friday. We have another update of that letter in the works and that, and then our video that brings to life some of that basic information and the, and then also a Q&amp;A video, some of the frequently asked questions that we're receiving from the public. Since you did receive the letter, I'm not going to go specifically into what we talk about in the letter, but as you know, the way that we're approaching it is we are basically wanting our residents and businesses to know three things, and that is, number one, we are working cooperatively with all of the state, local, federal agencies so that we do have the most accurate information to make decisions. We are letting them know what, what their city is doing in response to this, and then we are also letting them know what they can do in order to help mitigate the spread of the coronavirus. And so we will continue with, with that framing in mind and providing them with specific updates. The next update will go out tomorrow morning, and that will be in the form of a letter and a video, and both will be on our, on our webpage. They will also be sent out via our e-newsletter. All three of our e-newsletter lists serves. It'll be all over our social media channels, and we will provide it to our local newspaper, although we know that they just publish weekly, but they have the option of putting it online. So that is the external piece. In addition to that, we have access to two billboards, so we have provided them with billboard information from the CDC that includes tips for helping to mitigate the spread of the virus. And any questions on the external piece of things? Yes, Linda?
Yeah, I do. I'm always concerned because obviously we have a lot of people who either are not computer literate or don't have access to one. And so are you, is there a way to notify or to get this information to the couple of senior homes that we have? And then maybe to drop it at apartment buildings or something like that?
Those are great ideas. So just so you know, whenever we send it out to our e-newsletter subscribers, there are certain people who have requested paper information, so we mail it to them. But that's a great idea. There's no reason why we couldn't deliver it to our senior centers in the event that they aren't watching it. So we'll make a note of that, we can make, make that happen. Thank you. Okay, going on to the internal.
Oh.
Yeah.
Other languages?
It, it's just in English at this point. So if, yeah. We could, we do have translation services, so we could translate it into other languages as well. We haven't done that except in very specific instances, but we could do that.
Could you just add the tagline at the bottom that said, that says, "If you need translation to these half a dozen languages, call this phone number" or something?
Yeah. Just making a note. Thank you. Okay, moving to the internal piece. This is key because, as Cyrus mentioned, we want to make sure that we're looking after the health and safety of our team members here. And so we are making sure that we're providing them with as much information and as frequently as things are changing, it's a lot of information. So Cyrus has been sending out a lot of emails, very detailed emails, letting the team know how we're modifying our operations, some of the CDC information about how to prevent the spread. As a leadership team, we've been meeting frequently. In fact, we met on Sunday to talk about some of the things that we can do to make sure our city team is safe, but we are communicating on a regular basis with our city team via direct email and also on our Facebook workplace, which is a, sort of like a hub for, for all information. And then on the monitoring side of things, I mentioned two weeks ago when we gave you our communications update that we have some new technology in place. So we've been using our LexisNexis News Desk service. They are providing us with very specific reports each day on coronavirus as it relates to information about the city. And then in addition to that, our social media listening tool, TalkWalker, we have two reports that we're receiving every day. What activity is occurring on social media channels? Is there any negative, neutral, positive conversations? Do we have any hotspots? Do we have any disinformation that's going out so that we can correct that in real time?
And you know Sun River has a, they've, they're migrating to a new system.
I saw that, yes.
Okay.
I saw that it was funded.
Yeah.
Yeah. So any questions on the internal piece of things or on our news monitoring or social listening?
Can I, can we, on David's, can we, when he starts doing his, his talks, can we start blasting those? Put like a, like a 1,000 or 2,000 in and make it so it pushes across all media channels?
So we, we will be sharing it across all of our social media channels. At this point, we are sharing everything about coronavirus that is external across all of our channels. That would include Facebook, Twitter, Instagram.
You know, you know how to do the boosts, though, right?
Next door. Are you talking about putting dollars behind it? Like promotional dollars?
I want to put promotional dollars behind when he talks. Because I, I need that to reach people, because there's so much disinformation and, and it might be people's gut emotions, but I need someone that's actually a doctor to actually get out there to ease everyone's pain. And I'd love it if you could, when you're titling this, "Mayor, Dr. Sander, Mayor of Ranch Cordova." That way we can get that out there, because I'll take it and circle it back up, because it needs to get out there. What he, I mean, what he said in the, the group meeting would put a lot of people at ease if they could have heard that, like what you started the meeting with. "This is the truth, here's what's going on, here's what we, here's what we know, here's what we don't know, and here's the biggest concerns." And that would have been great if, like, you know, half of Anatolia could have saw it, because right now we're freaking out to the point where we're buying all the beans and rice out of a grocery store. Because we don't have, you know, a person that we trust that's actually part of us that we can go watch. And most people know who you are, and this would be a really good, you know, feather to make sure that we feel safe. So, I mean, like, push it. Don't just, like, put it on our media site. Let's actually black, enforce it into people's, that's not the right way to say that. Let's encourage it into people's Facebook feeds, because that's where everyone's getting all their data from. I mean, if I, I'm just sitting here, I literally had 35 texts from people asking about, like, what's going on? Is the city shutting down? Have you guys voted to shut down the city? No, we have not agreed to shut down the city. But that kind of thing, like this, when he's talking, I would love that, because I could love to boost that out.
We do have those capabilities, and so we'd be happy to put some ad dollars behind that.
Do, do I have to get a vote on that, Cyrus?
If, if funding is involved, yes, we do need to understand if they have the council's support.
Can I get three other people to support that?
Well, first of all, we'd have to, we would have to declare it of an emergency nature as an item that needs to be added to the agenda so that we can take some action.
I was going to say, this item is just for informational at this point.
This is not, we're not taking action tonight. We will be coming back to you when and if we decide to declare a state of emergency for the formal action item.
We'd have to do a special meeting for that.
We will do a special meeting on that, yes.
That emergency procedure you were talking about, it's at the third level right now, right?
That, that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You would change it then to go to the second level or something like that?
No, I think at this point, basically activating the EOC, it's within the city manager's authority and does not require, does not require city council approval. We will activate what we call Level 3, and Level 3 simply means that we are available at the lowest possible staff support to, for the community. The declaration of the state of emergency does require a council resolution, council approval, and that we will call for special meeting on that topic either. At some point, we need to monitor with the rest of the region to see what everybody else is doing. We know some cities have declared state of emergency already, but we need to understand exactly what that means. And the, and each agency possibly has a different definition of it. So we need to define ours and, and before we present it to you.
And then can I also, can I get like a step-by-step for the business owners, maybe working with Diane, of how we would access the funds? Like, you know, like the stuff that Donald just talked about? Like, is there something out there? Can we, can we put something, like a little small worksheet together just to make it easier for us? Because we're all freaking out. All the small business owners don't actually know how, like, do we just call SBA? Is it like, literally as easy as a phone call? "Hey, I, I need funding because," you know, like, it's hard for us to collect because everyone's going out of business now.
So I, I can answer part of that.
Okay.
So I would tell you, first, you're going to wait, just like everyone's waiting to call airlines and a bunch of other things, so they do not have the staff to handle that kind of ramp up. But I would caution the city putting a whole bunch of effort into explaining how to access other resources, and they should be relying on where that resource is and, and their outreach and their channels to get it, to getting it. If it's not something that we're responsible for, I would say, you know, direct them to where those things might be, but to sit there and say, "You're going to apply, this is the criteria," and just recreating what other things are that are out there. I mean, again, we were getting calls at my bank because they assumed SBA meant that, because we do SBA loans, that we must have more money for it. And that's not what they've done so far. In the past, there have been times where they augmented those programs to where you could go to a, a bank and get those, those types of resources. They haven't done it yet. So I don't think we should be spending our resources on that. I think we're responsible for police, we're responsible for stormwater, we're responsible for roads, we're responsible for streetlights and things like that, and making sure that we can continue to offer those core services that we're responsible for. I mean, a good example, you said, there are cities that have declared states of emergency. San Francisco to be, being one of them, they're also the county. So they, they operate the, the public health system. So depending on where it is, I don't, this is my opinion now, things are very concerning, but as, from a city service perspective, I don't know if we're at a, at an emergency level yet. You know, we still have reserves, we still have people working. So I think when those services that we are responsible for are at risk, that's when we need to be talking about it. But again, most of the cities that I know of that have, that have had to take drastic measures, it's because, it's the city of New York that is also the school system and also the public health system. That is not the case for us.
And that's very accurate, because the main purpose of declaration of emergency is cost recovery, or one of the main reasons. And at this point.
Prioritizing service.
Yeah, and at this point, exactly, or prior, or that. So at this point, as long as we are not spending a tremendous amount of funding towards this effort, there's really nothing to recover, or very little to recover. So, so this is a mechanism that we want to save for ourselves, and we need, we may not have a choice. Come, you know, the state may mandate this, or even the federal government may mandate that you have to go through to a local, total lockdown. That has happened in some states. So we have to monitor this. It's a very fluid situation. We just want to be proactive. When the time comes, we will have the resolution ready, we will have the definition ready, but we may not pull the trigger and wait until we know, we have a better understanding at the state and federal level as what they mean and what the next steps are before we do it.
Right, so maybe just a link? Maybe copy the link and put it on the website? I hear what you're saying, but I'm like, I'm just saying, like a link or something that makes it a little easier, because I can't even find it. So I would, something that makes it easier. Diane, maybe you can help out with this? Let's get it out to our business owners, work with Maria, let's, you know, because the two economic people that, you know, if our small business goes down, we hurt. So if we can, any way we can help cushion that blow, that would be great.
I mean, a mass email that, that the chamber might have to send out, I don't see the harm in it. I think redirecting people to go look at our website. I think redirecting people to go look at our website instead of going directly to SBA or wherever those offices are. I think just slows down the process in that case. And the only other thing I would say about a state of emergency or something like that, that depending, like you said, on what the state or the federal government does. And if that creates additional responsibility for the city, so like our police department and having to enforce something. And I don't even want to start naming things because we don't need to start rumors. But if there was an additional expense that we weren't expecting, those are the times when we're gonna start to talk about what are our next steps? And I don't think we've gotten there.
Would the state make us implement?
It's not, I would prefer not to.
He knows.
Has it ever happened?
Quantificate on what the state will or won't do.
Words, I'm just gonna be like, has that never, has it ever happened for, that's never happened for us, ever?
This is an unprecedented situation.
There's a lot of things in the last week that have happened that have never happened before.
Things have happened the last seven days that I would have never imagined that would happen. You know.
Eight days ago.
Banning trips from and to Europe, I would have never thought that this would be a reality for us.
He was closing borders amongst themselves.
Trading toilet paper on Facebook.
I have a box of toilet paper and the rear if he wants to trade for solid goods.
For the record, there is no shortage of toilet paper. People are now hopefully well supplied, those of you who are well supplied, please stop buying it, let everybody else have a chance. Yeah, that applies to any other commodity out there.
Johnny Carson or somebody started to run on toilet paper about forty years ago and that was the last time it was happening.
There was a shortage.
Yeah, he made some joke about it and the whole world went out and purchased all the toilet paper in town.
And again, not that, again, that this is our responsibility. It'd be interesting to see if we did have any way to prevent price gouging and other things like that in the city. But that really is the county DA's office to prosecute, right?
Well, some people are doing, you know, that going over the deep end, it's a hoarding, you know, hoarding rather for the toilet paper and hoarding for the hand sanitation, sand sanitation and just good heavens, you know?
I have hand sanitizer.
Be considerate of others is the general rule, I think it's a kindergarten rule, right? A lot of kindergarten rules still apply to us as adults, this is one of them. Another kindergarten rule is wash your hands.
Say happy birthday.
Keep your fingers out of your nose, don't touch other people, all of these things apply right now. The kindergarten rule is very important. Cyrus, do you have other, other report for us?
No, I think we do have some other specifics that we were hoping to talk to you about. But I think it was as part of our education, the mayor sounded, we were thinking if you could give us high level perspective from a scientific standpoint. Because this is a discussion that happens and in part of the video that you will be helping us to distribute to the community. But there is a lot of misinformation out there.
Sure, I don't have anything planned at this point, so it's gonna be sort of off the cuff. But I can sort of do what I did for that meeting earlier today that Garrett referenced. You're gonna take notes, great. So we're faced with a worldwide outbreak of a coronavirus. Coronaviruses have been known a long time, this is a new version of it. There's nothing particularly different or remarkable or shocking about it compared to other coronaviruses. It seems in line with those coronaviruses. Coronaviruses in humans cause colds, so it's a cold-like symptom, can lead to bronchitis in some cases. But they're not, they're not really super dangerous viruses as a species, as a group. This virus started in Wuhan, China. They made attempts to control it, they were not able to control it. It probably spreads pretty easily from person to person based on its characteristics. There are a whole bunch of numbers that can be assigned to it and sort of an equation that describes how an epidemic occurs or how a virus spreads. And the hard part for us right now is we don't have answers to a lot of those variables, what they are. For example, how readily does it spread from one person to another? A virus like measles spreads extremely easily. One person with measles walks in this room, it's airborne, you can easily get it to a whole bunch of people in the room. One person with influenza walks in this room, it also spreads, but it doesn't spread quite as well. So that person doesn't tend to infect as many people. We don't know where the, on that scale this virus is yet because we just don't have enough data. You gotta have a lot of data from different sites around the world to figure those sorts of things out, how dangerous it really is. We do have some data from China, from their version of the CDC. Unfortunately, a lot of what's been talked about in mass media is sounding definitive. And we all want black and white answers to these questions. But the reality is the answers to the questions that everyone wants to ask right now, there is no solid answer. You know, how dangerous is this for someone who's eighty years old and has a certain lung condition? We don't know, we won't know probably for years until the analysis has been done of what happened with this particular virus. So we, all we have are estimates. But because our population wants black and white answers, people are creating them. And so there have been some scary numbers put out there. And this, don't let me knock those numbers, some of those numbers could be accurate. It's not likely that this is that extreme of a situation, but you know, the range of numbers you've heard out there for deaths rate is, it's possible, it's possible. It's very low, it's possible it's moderate and scary. So we don't know. And unfortunately, a lot of the very technical precise questions, that's the answer, we don't know. And so the best response is to just be smart about what you do. And you've heard the reactions or the comments today from the CDC and the president about things to do, things not to do. If you're sick, stay home. If you're on the vulnerable identified population, having immunocompromised condition of some kind, if you've got lung condition. If you're a senior citizen and it's an increasing risk from age sixty to eighty and on up, the risk keeps going up as you age and all the numbers we've seen. Stay away from people who are sick and potentially isolate yourself in your home to the greatest extent you can, just to knock down your risk. So as I started this, we have a virus that's spreading and the question is, what do you do about it? There are a variety of things you can do. One, the first step is you try to contain it. China tried to contain it, that means you identify everyone who has it, you trace all their contacts, you tell those people to lock down in place. Don't allow the virus to spread to more people. Eventually, the virus would burn itself out, then it wouldn't have anyone to go to because everyone's separated and isolated and contained. That probably failed in excess of a month ago with respect to the world. China made a kind of heroic effort, I think, to try to contain it. It was unlikely when you had that many cases in China, you could truly contain it. When it got to South Korea, that was a very big outbreak with multiple original sources. That one also potentially maybe, I was still personally hoping that was containable. That one sort of got too big. When the large outbreak happened in Italy, clearly it was out. And we were dealing with a pandemic as opposed to something that could be contained and restricted. I think a lot of people here are still thinking about containment. They're thinking, we can identify all the cases, those people stay home and we'll stop this thing. And I don't think that is very likely. What is more likely is that we're gonna have to go through a wave of this epidemic. And it will take some time for us to work through that wave. And I can describe this sort of as a mountain, you know, you have a few people that get infected, a few more, a few more and a few more. And then it becomes an exponential growth and humans are not very good at understanding what exponential growth is. We think more linearly. So this is not a line on a graph, this is a curve that accelerates up rapidly. You know, like with a doubling time of, you know, days or hours depending on what you're dealing with. But so there's this exponential growth and right now we're way down on the low end of that sort of a curve. The question is, how big does it get? You know, at its peak, how many people are sick and really sick with this disease? And so the measures you're talking about now, social distancing, people staying home, the lockdown they're talking about in the Bay Area. Is really about taking that epidemic mountain, let's just call it a mountain, and trying to flatten it. So you don't have as many people sick at the same time. And that's important because if you have a lot of people sick at the same time, you overwhelm the number of health facilities that your health facilities can accommodate. So if you have so many sick people who are in a hospital who need an ICU bed or need a respirator, there's a limited number. Horrible decisions will have to be made about who gets care and who doesn't. And that's what we're trying to avoid, those horrible decisions. And because we don't know a lot of the fundamental basis of how this virus spreads or how big it might get, caution is certainly warranted. So the attempt is to take that mountain and sort of smash it down to a hill. You probably have fewer cases when you do that. You certainly save some people who are not going to be exposed to it because of all the measures you're taking. Trying to flatten that curve, so rather than have that big mountain of epidemic, you sort of have a hill of epidemic. One consequence of that appears to be though that you broaden how long it lasts. So rather than get it over with in an epidemic, you probably lengthen the amount of time that infection is around as you're continually trying to contain it. Not strictly contain it, but moderate how it spreads, mitigate how it spreads through the community. So we've had school closure announcements now for, you know, two or three weeks, depending on the district. Now we're talking, now the word indefinite is going out there. I suggest that, you know, based on the numbers we've seen so far, we're probably talking, and I think the president mentioned, CDC mentioned this publicly today. Eight weeks, ten weeks, something in that range is probably the normal course. And we don't really know what the effect of this social distancing effort is. As we flatten that, we don't really know how long it goes. Could be less than that, could be more than that, but something sort of in that timeframe, I think, is what people need to think about. And so as we continue the social distancing, you're gonna see hopefully some state level actions or some federal level actions as opposed to local jurisdictions taking actions. So the thing I saw today concerned me a little bit in the Bay Area was this, I'm not sure how they're describing it. I think they're calling it a total lockdown. Shelter in place, you know, lockdown, stay where you are, don't go to work. Shut down all businesses except for critical core businesses that I'm not sure how you're gonna define. That sort of an effort may have its place, but I'm not certain of its timing. There might be some epidemic math that suggests now is the time for that? I just haven't seen that. And so we as a region are probably gonna be facing that question or certainly our state is gonna be facing that question, how many measures do you take? The problem with epidemics like this is you catch the virus and then you get sick and there's a time period here. Maybe it's two days, maybe it's fourteen days, maybe it's more than fourteen days, we think it's about fourteen. Somewhere in this timeframe, maybe eight is when symptoms start showing up, but certainly by fourteen, you probably have it. So there's a lag between what you're doing and what you're seeing. So everything we're seeing is sort of like who was infected two weeks ago. That's what we're seeing now. Two weeks from now, we'll be seeing the results of who's infected today. So you have to make decisions in advance of knowing what's actually going on because of that delay of getting a virus and showing symptoms of it. It makes this business very difficult, messy and filled with guesswork. And the reality is you just have to act with great caution and with the best information you have available. Does that cover sort of what you were, what you were hoping for? People ask me about a vaccine all the time. A vaccine is probably a twelve month to eighteen month process, it's very complicated getting a vaccine approved. I think human trials started on one today. There'll be several different phases of human trials, the FDA will probably expedite the process for approving it. But that's not gonna deal with our next two months or our next three months or next six months, whatever this is that we're currently going through. There are no antiviral drugs identified as of now, there's hope about a couple. But that will also take some time. And in both cases.
Is that faster than vaccines?
It could be, depending on, depending on which antiviral worked. But we have a very limited number of them in the arsenal and they are generally extremely targeted towards certain viruses. We don't have any that affect this family. So be a matter of luck to have something that was designed for something else that works for this. Now, I'm sure a lot of things are being tried, there are a lot of drugs under development, I'm sure everything's being thrown at this. I know in China, they did it in a way that we can't. Because they can do sort of human testing in a way that basically we can't in the United States. Maybe they will, you know, show some results with something that we haven't seen yet.
Question about the, does anyone have the number of youth you have? What is youth, you know, sixty-five or older is listed as the older and they're the ones who will have worse type of return, you know, on this COVID-19. But the youth wouldn't. So we're talking about one or two percent of the people who would really be, who would die from it possibly. But what about the others who are gonna have it and then just like, you know, someone would just have it like a cold? And then they're back and they're done and then, so is that even been looked at yet in the state or in the counties?
You know, it's the fatality rate, I really, I'm hesitant to say numbers. But I'll repeat what's publicly out there, China looks like a three point five percent fatality rate. In South Korea, it looks like a point four percent fatality rate. In both of those cases, there are all sorts of confounding factors. In China, fifty percent of men smoke. And so if you look at the death rate in China, it's two to one men to women as a result of that. Because of all the disease they accumulate from smoking, that hurts them when you're trying to treat them for this infection, makes them more likely to get pneumonia. So there's, that's a confounding factor, that's not the case here. Medical care and standards in China are different from here. South Korea is different from here in the same way. And what we don't know is how many people are walking around with it and have almost no symptoms. And that is probably, you mentioned the youth, that's probably the situation for the youth. For them, odds are, there's not a good biological mechanism that says kids simply don't get it, that doesn't make much sense. What's more likely is that they get it, they don't show symptoms. So they walk around, they'll share it, spread it, not knowing, of course. And people who are older will get it, have worse symptoms, people who are really older will have even worse symptoms. That tends to be the course of it. And it's probably more about the age of your immune system and other health conditions than anything else. As you get to be a senior citizen, your immune system just isn't quite as effective on average as people who are younger. And so that's probably why you're seeing that uptick. That and the accumulation of other physical ailments that may facilitate pneumonia.
Thank you.
But yeah, that percentage, don't buy or believe anything you hear yet. It's way too early to know what that number is because you don't know the denominator. In China's case, those numbers are largely people who are hospitalized, of the people who are hospitalized, how many perished? It's not how many people have it, that's an unknown.
In China, they built hospitals in two weeks.
And they still had.
And then they fell down.
And they still had to use gymnasiums and public spaces and they were, their health system was overloaded with patients. That's what we're trying to avoid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
This is.
This is not medical advice, I'm not a physician, I'm a PhD, not an MD.
That's awesome.
Public policy and virology and little public health and a lot of medical research stuff. So if that's helpful to people, I'm glad. But it's just my opinion and based on some facts, continue to look to the CDC, state authorities, county authorities for your best advice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is definitely helpful, I'm sure helpful for all of us. So some other issues that we wanted to also mention and talk about. The meeting with the school district and some of our community partners was discussed that we had earlier today, was brought up. I had a conversation with the superintendent late Friday afternoon. And she was, in light of the school closures, she was interested in receiving, exploring ways that the city, both the city of Ranch Chiodova and Folsom, could assist with the situation. I volunteered to convene a meeting and thank you to our great staff, we were able to send invitations out on Saturday. And we were able to convene a meeting today at the city hall this morning. And we had a number of representatives from our nonprofits, our faith-based, including and staff from the school district that participated. And we talked about the issue. I think, as mentioned, we still have a lot to learn about what the actual needs are. We know that broadly what the school district is concerned about is, first of all, the distribution of food for those students that receive free lunch or meals at the school. There's also a concern about students that are truly homeless or may not have a stable housing. And then obviously the cessation of some of the after-school programs and what could be done to continue some of those efforts. The discussion that we had today was about the magnitude of the problem and the need throughout the school district. And the school district is working on getting some information, getting some data, some facts and the process that they have in place. And we will be reconvening and we will be meeting again on Wednesday to further discuss it and identify the resources that we have in the community that can assist and help to mitigate some of the issues and some of the problems that we have. At this point, we think that providing or assisting with childcare or possibly after-school programs is going to be very difficult. Because of many, of the many restrictions we have, first of all, we cannot have more than ten people in the same space. Then it becomes the issue of who's the qualified person to provide childcare or to be able to provide some after-school activities. The sheer number of those and the space. School district has closed down all of their facilities, so that poses a challenge. So we need to be thinking and looking at alternative locations.
This is where it got odd for me in the meeting. Unfortunately, the school district staff were not present in the room. So it was a difficult conversation with them remotely. But they're in the food service business five days a week. Granted, they do it in their own facility, they don't hand it out at the door. But trying to stand up a separate food operation on the side when they've got every. But trying to stand up a separate food operation on the side when they've got every mechanism to do it internally doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Using their facilities to distribute it at their sites would seem to make a lot more sense. Why reinvent the wheel when you've got it, right? Second question is very similar to that, the after-school operation. I don't know if they've been ordered by the governor to close all of their sites or how exactly that works, but if there is a critical need for after-school that they are required to meet, and I think the governor's order for suggesting closing schools actually said this, you need to continue your daycare, your after-school care. I don't know why you wouldn't use their facilities that they have available for that. I would think they could modify it to lower the density of student, use the instructors they have. I don't know what the barrier is. But trying to stand up anything on our own outside of that system is going to be really a sort of a slapdash operation. It would seem like they've got the facility, the personnel, the experience to continue with that. Do you have any insights on that?
I would just say that it was interesting, because I had a few people ask me about the Center of Praise facility that we now have, the whatever power center, I can't remember it, the Loveless Power Center. We should keep that name.
Maybe. That's a good idea.
So no, we've had some questions. I mean, trust me, I was on a school board, this never happened. I mean, when we had H1N1, a kid would get it in a kindergarten class, we'd close the class on Friday, deep clean over the weekend, the kids would come back on Monday that weren't sick. So we're in uncharted territory. My assumption would be that they have the trained staff and the facilities, and they would have less demand for it, because some of these parents are going to just keep their kids home. I know the driving force, and I know that the driving force in California right now in closing schools is this quarantining, trying to slow it down. The interesting interview that I heard 10 days ago was a school district outside of Seattle. And the reason they closed school first had nothing to do with community spread. It had to do with the fact that when they added up their vulnerable population of employees that make up that or living with somebody that have a vulnerable population, they realized 60% of their staff wasn't going to show up on Monday. And that's when they decided that they, when they realized they didn't have the adults to operate the school system is when they chose to shut down. That is not what we're doing here. So you would assume there are able-bodied staff that could do that. And I know I can't remember who had the interview today, but they were saying, why aren't daycares closing? And frankly, what the speaker said was, you know, out of sheer desperation, there are people that have to go to work, right? I mean, the idea right now of doing what we're doing, and what kind of strain does that put on nurses that have children in school and doctors that have children in school and, you know, paraprofessionals and other people that need to move people around hospitals or whatever else, or ambulance, right, operators? So the fact that we say like, you know, shut down daycares in schools, what does that do to the people that you said are already taxed and were concerned about them being taxed?
Right.
Right? So I think that's another part of this, that I don't have the answer, but I can tell you at the school district level, I would imagine those healthy, able-bodied people that are providing that service, they would be the ideal place to. Like us going and opening up Loveless, and I know the Boys and Girls Club isn't closing because literally they can't. You know, at what point do you say, you know, do we try to do that here? I mean, we're gonna try to get into the business of this, but, you know, we can't go have pals, you know, scale up and offer that service when we might need every cop we have in a couple of weeks, depending on what's going on.
So getting back to your question, your very specific question about closing schools. What SAC City said was that they specifically ordered everyone not to be on campus for three days so that they could complete a thorough cleaning of all their facilities. And to the extent, I mean, I can envision, classrooms are not the tidyest places in the world with little kid papers and pillows and sit-apons thrown around the room, but to the extent that they can clean the classrooms, they did not want teachers and staff in the schools so that they could clean.
But Linda, that was the first order that was going to start today. Then they updated it to the three-week closure. So I don't, I don't know if that, I think everyone--
They still wanted everybody to stay away for three days.
Well, in any case, the good discussion that happened in the meeting today was, how do we mobilize volunteers to help with a gap that the school district has, whether it's food distribution at the sites or whatever this after-school element is that they still need to perform? And, you know, the organization sitting there that suddenly struck me as critical or potentially very relevant was the Salvation Army, because they have the ability to organize volunteers, they sort of have like the capacity to manage it perhaps. And if you were trying to, you know, you had seven target sites and you needed 10 volunteers a day to each of those sites, maybe that is the nexus you would use to deploy those folks, as opposed to trying to set up our own.
So the question, the question that I keep wondering, whether your kid is on a year-round school or whether it's summertime, everybody has to deal with this at some point during the year. It's just that this is, this is different. This is rearranged, so it is more abrupt. So perhaps people don't have those normal summertime plans in place.
Brainwashed, huh?
But, but why is this really, the newspapers are making a huge to-do out of it, as though this never happens and kids go to school 12 months out of the year, which of course is not, is not accurate.
I think probably one issue that's aggravating the problem is the fact that many, many other activities are also being suspended. You know, kids in the summertime can go to the pools, they can go participate in some sports activities. Now, all of our sports activities have been suspended. All of our, even movie theaters are, people are not comfortable going to the movie theater. So I think it has created, it has created a domino effect that probably makes it even more difficult now than the regular summer vacation.
Psychologically, though.
Yeah. And psychologically, too, right. So I think, you know, as we had the discussion today, one role, and we had a subsequent conversation about that with our city team, I think that one of the greatest roles that the city can play in this process and this discussion is to be the convenor and organizer for these discussions. Obviously, we don't have the bandwidth or the capacity or the necessary skill sets to be running a daycare. There's no way that we can really get into that business. But if we could, if we could work and assist with community organizations to develop a robust volunteer list, identify the needs, identify and match those needs with the skills that we have or the resources that we have in the community, that's the way we could be the most effective. And that's the purpose of this dialogue, that's the purpose of this discussion. We will continue it, but I think at the end of the day, we will not, we will not be, and I want to be very candid, there's no way that we can accommodate many of the needs that they have related to childcare or after-school programs. I don't think the community as a whole has that bandwidth to be able to handle it. So this discussion, it was a great productive start, a good discussion to start, but we still have work to do. And then some other things that I just wanted to say related to our city services would probably be affected in some ways. We are now finding that some of our vendors, some of our contractors, some of our consultants have basically shut down, and they're no longer available to us. To give you an example, point in case, we had planned a training program with our new computer, with Enegy, the work that we're doing with the implementation of new software. And that company has completely gone remote. Basically, they've shut down all of their offices. So they're no longer available to us to provide those services. And we're seeing more and more of this throughout the community. So it is possible that some of our services will be affected and we will make adjustments as necessary. Yes, sir.
What about the, you said contractor, what about the people who are finishing or supposed to be finishing Zinfandel? Is that slowed down because of people not working, because of the contractors saying we're not going to do anything right now until this clears up, or what?
No, at this point, that's not an issue. I think the only reason the work is not happening is because of the rain. But hopefully, hopefully, because in fact, the project was scheduled to be paved last weekend, and if it wasn't for the way, for the rain, it would have been done.
Yeah.
So, so far, we're not getting that from the contractors, that they're not going to work on the project.
Okay, I was just kind of curious. When you said contractors, the first thing I thought of was contractors you have working on Zinfandel and other things on the streets here in Rancho.
Yeah, I think most of, most of the people that I'm talking about are either consulting firms, engineering firms, planning firms, or IT, those that have the luxury of possibly doing some of their work remotely, but a contractor cannot build a bridge remotely. So they have to be physically here and do it. So that's, I think, in essence, some of the things I wanted to share with you. I think at some point, we will also have some policy discussions, not tonight, but just to, we talked about the impact to the business community. This, I think the overall impacts are going to be far-reaching. This is, as you look at the impact to the airlines, the airline companies, to restaurants, to every, just the whole host of businesses that are affected by this and will continue being affected by this for a long duration of time. The significant drop in the equity market and everything that we're seeing, it will have long-lasting economic impact. In fact, this could be the onset of some recession. They're going to start discussions about that. So there is a reality, there is something that we need to be anticipating and be prepared for, that some of our revenue streams will probably go down. We know for a fact that hotel occupancy is very low, so the TOT and some of the revenues that we get through that mechanism have been reduced dramatically. We anticipate that there will be a decline in our sales tax, so our measure H for revenues will be affected by this, just things to consider, things to think about. And ultimately, I think some of our businesses would suffer because of this economy, the impact that this has created. And we need to be thinking about ways that we could possibly work with our business community and identify ways that we could, we could help them, whether they storm. Maria, is there anything else that you would like to add? So this was not an action item, this, we just wanted to give you a very high-level update about what's going on and the steps that we have taken to deal with it. What I'm saying tonight, it could be completely irrelevant tomorrow night at this time because something could happen at the federal or state level that changes everything then--
If we had this meeting on Friday, we would have talked about completely different--
Right. So we'll be, it's extremely fluid situation. We're watching this and monitoring this very closely, and we are ready to deal with it and are prepared to take any action that's needed to address the needs of our community and be proactive about our needs. Questions, comments?
Mayor Sander, I do have public comment cards.
Okay. Let's hear some public comment.
The first speaker is Tara Colvinbach. Following Tara will be Diane Rogers.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and city manager. I'm coming, I really appreciate all your concern with this issue in the community. And what I've found is there's a grassroots effort within the community on Facebook and on Nextdoor to help those that can't get out. Say, they've got immune compromised and their partner is immune compromised, and there's no way they can get out and get supplies. So there's a lot of people out there, I've found, that are willing to help, but we don't know who to help. And I was wondering, is there, do they contact, maybe they contact the city, or I don't know who they contact? And we'd like to get the people who want to help together with the people that need help. So it's just something I wanted to bring up. I don't know how long this is going to last, you know? Right now, paper products are still in very short supply. I tried to help someone that's disabled. I could not find TP anywhere. I had to give them some of my own. It's just ridiculous out there when you go into stores. And I know that's probably going to stop as soon as all the garages are full and the freezers are full. I mean, if they have nowhere to put it, you know, maybe it'll stop. But, and I know people are limiting the, how many people can take, you know, of certain products. So maybe that will solve the problem. But my concern is that, just to get those people together, and I just don't know what the mechanism is to do that. People aren't sort of responding on Nextdoor, maybe they don't feel comfortable, or I don't know. But there are some, also, there are some low-income people that are just desperate for certain things. And, and the school system is, you know, giving the meals out, that seems like to be, there's a process in place. But for the families that are really low-income and just need a roll of paper, it's like, you see these desperate people in Rancho Cordova, and I don't know what to say, I can't get them a penny. It's like I tried to send my brother out, like, can you find some? No, he can't find it either. So there must be something somewhere, or are there supplies somewhere that we could have as a city to give people that are in need? I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but I just thought I'd bring it up as an issue out there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tara.
Mr. Mayor, may I just make a quick comment? First of all, I think we have had the same difficulty in sourcing some of the stuff that you talked about. One of the topics that we talked about, Tara, today at this meeting that we had, we want to develop a robust list of volunteers that can help and possibly, and some churches and some organizations that may have access to some of those essential needs. And then we would try to use our ability in the way of the communication chain that we have to connect some of these resources with the volunteers to be able to serve those in need. So that's definitely a discussion, and at this point, we're trying to put some infrastructure in place to be able to do that. And Lori and Al with our office is going to be taking the lead on that. At this point, we're not really able to do, given what's going on. A lot of work with community engagement, so we're redesigning and repurposing some of her mission to focus on that effort and identify volunteers throughout the community that could provide those kind of services.
Diane, can I ask one question, only because I read about it earlier today, that a handful, a handful of distilleries in the country have started producing their own hand sanitizer? And we do have, one smaller one, one very large distiller, distillery in town with a huge amount of capacity. I don't know if that's something that we can engage with them on talking to, but I've heard about 10 so far in the country that are doing it themselves.
We will look into it. There are some YouTube videos how to make your own hand sanitizers, it's basically, I think--
We have Rancho hand sanitizer. New York City has it.
You know, soap and water works awfully well. Soap and water, don't need the fancy gel.
Fair enough. Just saying.
Welcome, Diane.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Couple of quick things I wanted to share with you. I just got notified that Sacramento County has been declared a, the ability to receive SBA disaster loans. So to respond to that, it had, you had to have five businesses being impacted within a jurisdiction, and obviously, five is going to be an easy number for us to get to, but it's Sacramento is the primary county, and then the contiguous counties around it as well. So that just came in this afternoon. And there, we do have websites, so just to share with the group, the chamber is posting links to CDC, WHO, SBA, those kinds of things. So if somebody does want to direct, and I've already spoken with Maria, that we're going to try and funnel that information as very best we can. Couple of things I also wanted to pass on, if you'd like, we have all of the street addresses of all the new residents for the past five years. So if there are folks that we wanted to mail to through the Explore program, we could also be able to do that in response to what Linda had brought up. Couple of other things is I want to urge the community to watch for fraud and scams during this time. There's a lot of things going on, a lot of information out there, so please use the resources that everyone keeps mentioning, CDC, WHO, the state, the county, those approved, or what I would call more accurate information coming from those folks. I urge you to be careful about that. And that communicating with factual information is going to be critical. With regard to supporting the local business community, there's a lot of ideas out there. One of the, I think, one of the most helpful ones with those that are customer-facing, for restaurants, for example, is to buy gift cards, because that is give cash to the businesses that they can use immediately, and we can choose not to use those gift cards until a much later date. That's been very popular out there. Additionally, using-- Additionally, using website purchasing, but again, being very careful about who you order your online orders through, because there's also a lot of ads out there that send website ordering through different companies, and upwards of 30 to 40% add-on gets placed on those. So just to be careful and cautious about that. And then just continue to support the local business community in, in a variety of different ways. There are businesses, we're going to be taking a survey, hopefully, of those restaurants that do have takeout or delivery or those kinds of resources, and hopefully be able to produce those. And on a particular note, if you're a company, and I'm just using this as a platform, that requires certificates of origin to be able to get your goods and out of the country, to please let us know as soon as possible, but that's a legal document that chambers are allowed to authorize to allow you to export your products, actually. Then finally, the chamber itself has been a part of some conference calls with Vice President Pence's group, hearing lots of folks there. The United States Chamber has been sending out a lot of information, and then tomorrow, for example, I'll be on another SBA conference call with information about that. So basically, I just wanted to use this as a platform to get that information out there and to let folks know that we are tracking it, monitoring it, and we're here as a resource in the very best way that we can. Any questions?
All right.
So I, I just got a email from the Elk Grove Economic Development Department with all that information, and I suspect it's probably the result of the conference call you were talking about. So you could put out something like that for our business community to, or for your, your email server list, whatever.
Sure. And we've got a lot of email resources. Shelley and I are talking about combining things and talking to each other. If you aren't aware, Mike and I and his team meet at least once a month, and so we're going to see what other resources and tools might be out there, microloans, things like that, that we would like to make available. But we're taking it slowly, as, as Mayor Sander was talking about, because if we don't promote accurate information and the resources slowly and methodically, I think, you know, we need to set that example rather than sort of overreacting to the whole concept.
For sure.
Okay? Thank you very much.
We have one additional speaker, and that is Darryl Langwell.
Darryl, welcome.
Mayor, Council, Darryl Langwell again. Is there any information on how long this virus remains viable on surfaces that it might come in contact with? I don't want my delivery boy sneezing on the pizza box and getting, getting the virus.
It's, it's an unknown, frankly. Those sorts of studies are always very difficult to do because of the widely varying conditions which occurs. Like if that pizza box sat out in the sun for a little while, that would give you one result. If it was placed in a refrigerator for a while, that would give you a different result. If it was a humid day, that's a third result. If it's a dry day, that's a fourth result. How hot was the pizza box when it, you know, stuff landed on it? There's just so many variables that there's no easy answer to that. But this virus requires that it be in an aqueous environment. If it's left on its own and dries out somewhere, it'll, it'll be non-functional. And it's just the structure of the outside of the virus can't, can't maintain itself in a non-aqueous environment. But an aqueous environment can be a micro-dropeule, just tiny little bit of water around the virus. So under the right circumstances, it might last on a surface for a while. If there's a nice little groove and it wasn't too hot, and it could kind of sit in there and, you know, cling, cling water to its outside, it might survive a, you know, days, day or two, something like that. Under normal conditions, you're probably talking more like hours rather than days.
Thank you.
But it's almost impossible question to answer. Along with the seasonality of it, people are speculating that summer will come and it'll be too hot, and unfortunately, it's not, not nearly that simple. No viruses really work specifically that way. They all have cycles, we don't understand why. All of them have cycles. This one will probably have a cycle. Hopefully, it just goes away the way the original SARS did. But if that's not possible, then it could be just an added virus to the milieu of viruses that we live with. Maybe it's seasonal, maybe it's not. Don't know.
So, Mr. Mayor, as the final part of this discussion, I also wanted to get some direction and guidance from the City Council related to council meetings. Some agencies, some jurisdictions have basically limited the number of public that could attend those meetings for their own safety. Is this something the council may be interested? We've also are recommending or thinking about canceling non-essential work sessions that we, for the time being, if there's no pressing item and no pressing issue, that we would just hold, stick with the regular council meetings. And even on those, we would probably eliminate most of our presentations. There's no need to bring the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts to the council meeting at this point. So we would basically stay, stay on essential business items that are timely or needed to be, to be handled. But I wanted to get some guidance from the council about the attendance of public at your future meetings.
I'm not sure we have an issue, simply because, number one, we don't have the crowds that some other jurisdictions have. And, and number two, if you are doing as you just suggested, confining the agenda to true items of business, those are not always very interesting to the public. They're somewhat dry, so.
Yeah, I would tend to say minimal, if any presentations at all, I think is fine for now. I think there should be even less chairs here than we have. We should probably think about if we do want to have some sort of limit at some point. But then also reminding, what, I, I don't know the exact specificity of it, but I know that the governor augmented parts of the Brown Act to allow the public to interact with, with public meetings through other electronic means, and figuring out how we can also push that out so that people understand that, you know, they don't need to come here and sit here all night. While we'd love to have your comments, you don't have to be here to interact with, with the council. But I do think it's important to continue to have these meetings until, or recommended not to.
Yes, we want to facilitate the public being here.
Thank you.
I think having a chairs open like this, maybe a few were chairs, unless it's something you know is really hot, that you're going to have a lot of people here. Even that way, you could have people out in the American River, remember, would that be that much? I don't think we have that many things coming up that are going to be that popular.
Yeah, I think we will be somewhat selective about what is put on the agenda for the time being. If, if something is going to attract a large crowd, then, then we would probably just postpone it for, for a different time.
We don't need to talk about boats and RVs.
Ever again. What?
There's nothing else on that topic? Obviously, if we have a need to declare an emergency in some way, that'd be a special meeting.
Yes.
Otherwise, we would continue with our normal meeting calendar. Okay, we're going to move on to council requests for future agenda items, I'd number 13. I've got one, we have a...
I would like to request that we talk about the, the football that we wanted to bring up.
Okay.
As something...
There's a situational issue with the Junior Lancers football program. They belong to a league, so they have sort of like one team per level, they belong to a league. The league coordinates different zones, like the Junior Lancers versus the Junior, everything else in their league. That league has decided to redraw the internal boundaries, attendance boundaries for football programs. And the manner in which they've drawn ours takes the entire Sunrise Douglas area and gives it to Pleasant Grove High School. That basically would eliminate Junior Lancers as a viable football organization. So it looks like sort of a power play by Pleasant Grove to say, hey, we want all these kids that you've developed up, because now we have a nice, big, aggressive championship-winning league. It looks like a play by Pleasant Grove to say, hey, we want all those kids into our program, and so they've drawn the boundary in such a way that it basically kills off the Junior Lancers. So option one, try to convince them not to do that. Option two, find another league to participate in. Leave that one alone, go somewhere else. And so...
So is that a Pop Warner League right now?
It is.
Okay.
I don't know who, yeah, I don't know who organized it.
What are the alternatives?
There's a, there's a Level One that would be all the higher-level schools, their answers never been in before, and so this would be a different league altogether. So that'd be competing with more of the Folsom kids and stuff like that. So we would rather stay in this league, we just need to be able to have three people on this council to Leo Cyrus to give them a quick, happy phone call and be like, hey, we really don't like that you drew that, since that Rancho Cordova is an open school and the boundaries aren't locked into Elk Grove, you can go to Rancho if you chose to, because half the kids in Anatolia that are, and their dad, 90% of the dads are all the coaches in Anatolia right now. And they don't want to have to commute all the way out to Elk Grove, and that'll just kill the program, football program for us in general.
Okay, so it's, it's like you'll have to bring...
I was going to say, that's probably good conversation for enough for...
An item?
Yeah.
Excellent.
And this may be a city attorney item in the end. Yeah.
Maybe you making a phone call.
Maybe.
I think at this point, we're asking if the council would support us getting into, looking into this a little further.
Absolutely.
Can I just point something out about what we just talked about before this? This is something that will probably require, or not, will probably convince a lot of people to maybe come and attend a meeting. So this might not be a good time to dig in. Especially considering, we don't know if there are going to be youth sports anytime.
It just needs to be in a different venue.
I don't know if it actually even needs to be agendized. I think Cyrus just sort of heard what his council thought about this item as an importance, you know, within his manager's discretion, he has a lot of leeway.
But then again, the more pressing issue right now is there are no youth league sports operating anywhere in California.
Mr. Cyrus, the video game.
The video leagues?
You know, Fortnite League is still on point, killing the game.
All right. If there is nothing else, everyone, follow your guidelines, be smart, be safe, and we will see you in two weeks.
Wash your hands.
We're adjourned. Wash your hands with soap and water.